Thank you. Hello, everyone. Today is March something?
Fourteenth.
Thank you, March fourteenth. And study session for the planning board. It will be a continuation from our last study session reviewing the land use document. And I'll pass it over to Jocelyn.
Okay. We're going to do a continuation of where we left off, but since we have Dawn, Elliot, and Summer around, let's just do a quick reminder or introductions of who we are.
All right. Two.
RC Miles, I'm a official in Wakeville. Minnesota Planning.
Integrand Planning Board.
I'm Kim Field. Committee member.
Owen Krueger, Planning Board.
Carol Kuhn, Planning.
Dave Bolts, Planning.
Kendra Lindner, Planning.
Matt Bagley, Citizen.
Here in committee.
Awesome.
I'm Brian Corvitz, Planning Board.
Cam Hall, Planning.
Kurt Samuelson, Planning Board.
Harper Nicky, Planning Board.
Karina Elrod, Planning Board.
Summer Frederick, Clarion.
Donna Elliott, Clarion.
Jocelyn. So with that, a couple things from the last meeting as we remember. We were putting up on the board, yours just a reminder of our carriage tonight, looking through the permitted use table, the drafts, and providing comment to Clarion on the uses and on the idea, and any future items that we want to add to, like a future item to be discussed. We started a list last time, that was part of your packet, and Dennis very nicely offered to continue to be that scribe, so we're not going to go over that list, we're just going to continue to add to that list. And with that, we're going to hopefully get through the rest of the use table tonight. I'm going to turn over this to Summer.
All right. Well, so we got through a good amount of the table last time, actually, looking back over what we did. And we ended at office, which is for me on page seven. No, seems that there may be some different page numbers, but... So office, and does anyone have any general office comments before we get into the nitty gritty? No?
Well, one item. Office large, let's see. It's now permitted in IP, I-1, and I-2 where it wasn't before. Is there a reason behind that?
Well, it wasn't divided by size before.
Right. So it was allowed. It's a combination of existing uses that were allowed in those areas.
Okay, got it.
Other office comments?
I have detailed comments.
Sure.
If you want to jump into those.
I think we're done with the general comments, so go for it.
Under footnote 64, third line down, you talk about I-3 district, but there's not an I-3 district up here.
Got it.
And then, let's see. Okay. Number 72. So you moved trade and vocational school into office, and it used to be an institution. Where an institution, it makes more sense to me. So why was that shift made? What?
The... Because it's more in line with office in terms of the way the use happens.
And usually, what we're seeing more and more is that it's not a public or an institutional use. It can be just a commercial facility that's training people. There are more and more of these that are just a business that provides structure. And there's always a problem between the pub... What's the difference between a public training institution and a private one? And the short answer is that the public ones all have campuses, and we've got higher education uses here. But trade or vacation school behaves, as Summer said, more like a business than that educational campus.
But we're still calling it a school. And when I look at even how it's, you know, the conditional use across all the categories, that looks more like what you see under institutions. And under institutions, we do have private and public universities, for example. So, I mean, I can see your point in thinking about some of the colleges that exist now occupy office spaces, or what used to be office spaces. It just really doesn't seem to fit here. It's all of a sudden...
That's fine.
I mean, how does anybody else feel about it? I don't know that it necessarily changes anything as far as how it's being used, but it just didn't seem to fit.
Vocational schools, that could be diesel mechanics, welding, anything like that. That's what I would be moving on.
Right. Well, but they're... That's right, but they're usually teaching it in an enclosed building, usually in a classroom setting or a garage setting. We could... I guess that's... It's because it has a commercial flavor that we classify it with other commercial uses. I don't care, we can put it up either way. But you guys can understand, if you slice this baloney too thin, you'll be here for a long time. Difference between a machinery school versus an accounting school. Fine, we can draw that line. But what if the same institution teaches machinery and accounting? So it's better to label it and put it in one place or another. Most of them are classroom teaching situations. And if they're doing outdoor stuff, they're in enclosed... Excuse me. If they're doing mechanical stuff, they're in enclosed facilities.
So the way I would distinguish it, if it's a school, it belongs in an institution. If it's a training center, that's where I would say borderline, you know, I can appreciate being in office, but again, here, the terminology is a school. It's a trade or vocational school.
It's fine, let's move it up to school. It's just a matter of categorization.
I mean, that's where it was before.
That's fine.
There are a lot of schools that are in office buildings, like Colorado Institute of Technology, they're in an office building in Aurora.
I think the issue is just where it falls in the table.
A lot of colleges...
It's not an office.
University of Phoenix is in an office building.
Right. But it is not an office. It may be occupying an office space, but it's not an office.
I think we got into this a little bit last time when we talked about when someone opens up the code and is looking for something, where would they look for it? And the issue has arisen that if this is a school, somebody might look under institutional instead of under office.
That's where it was. That's where you guys had it. I mean, that's where we had it.
Where you had it before. That's right.
We can move that back. That's not a problem. Other comments about office?
Yeah, I just can't read my writing.
Does anyone else have any other issues with office?
It's a policy question, but I would just say that I think there's worthy discussion of whether or not a temporary labor hall should be permitted in Littleton at all, based on the definition.
Okay.
And maybe just change P to conditional.
Okay.
You put conditions in the new language, but...
Yeah. So you're asking, your issue is whether or not that should be a use, that does Littleton want that as a use? Yeah, I think that's a bigger conversation.
Well, I couldn't tell whether you're asking for that or asking to have the Ps changed to Cs.
My suggestion is to change Ps to Cs, but that's a policy question that we said would go up on the board for discussion, not in this group.
I think you mentioned this earlier, and I think maybe this does fall under one of those general questions. So right now, we're calling it general personal services large and general personal services small. And it's really just a... You grouped a number of things together, correct?
Yes. Yep. Well, and just to make sure, does anyone else have any issues with office before we...
Oh, sorry. Go on.
No, that's fine. Okay. So retail sales and personal services, the next category. And the distinction was that we've now grouped general personal services and general retail sales, large and small. And the clarification of that that's indeed what we intended to do. Comments? Questions?
So let's see if I can read my handwriting. So there's a comment under footnote 76 where it says, "Do you want big retail to be a C use in CA zone to promote smaller scale walkable urbanism?" So right now, that applies to... Oh, so in CA, right now, it's P.
Yep.
And by making it C would, again, what you're stating. So I think that's, again, a policy question that we do need to address. I think it's a good one. It's a good question. Can't trust my handwriting anymore. I should have been a doctor. I don't have anything. Anybody else?
Retail sales and personal services? No? All right.
I do. Hold on. Sorry. So 78. You have this as accessory, footnote 78. And then you state, "Are conditional uses in the OS district?" So should that be a C, an A, an accessory only on a... So is it a conditional use or is it an accessory use?
So we made it an accessory use.
So it would not require conditional use approval.
Correct.
Which would require conditional use approval.
Which would not. Accessory use is the way this is drafted right now. If it's just A, it's accessory use. If it meets the standards and it's clearly secondary and subordinate to the primary use, then it's allowed. But you don't go to a hearing for it. It's just allowed because it's incidental to the primary use.
Okay.
So we took the language of the way it's written and made it accessory.
So currently, it's conditional use and you're making it an accessory use?
It was an interpretation of the way the language is written.
Do you like it to be a conditional use? I don't.
I mean, I think this is... So something that we talked about before, Dawn, is that when we went through, right, when we went through this, there was actually a lot of things that, in essence, changed the intent. So it becomes another kind of question. Do we want to do that? And it's a policy question yet again. Okay. I don't have any more here.
Anyone else for retail personal services? Going once? No? Recreation and entertainment? No one has anything to say about adult entertainment? That's a first. Carol?
It's currently in Title III. So I guess it was based on a decision to pull all the criteria and stuff, pull it in. But what you were talking about before was to just collect them all in all the different places and put them in one.
Right.
Right? Okay.
Now, when you go here, you see all the requirements.
Instead of having to go over another...
Going to another Title II, answer a question which is really just a land use question.
Right.
Recreation and entertainment indoor. You've added the V, which we're going to debate as policy.
Yep.
B and T and B1. I would dispute, if we allow it, dispute the T. That's a very sensitive area, very, you know, right adjacent to residential typically. I wouldn't want to see recreation and entertainment in that district.
Okay.
It may be in B1. That's, again, that's a policy. The whole V thing is policy, but definitely not in a T district.
Okay.
We don't have that many T districts.
This is a separate policy issue, whether it should be allowed at all in...
At all, right. But if we do allow it, get it out of the T area.
All right.
Yeah, go ahead.
On recreation and entertainment outdoor in the CA zone, it looks like that's a new use. It's expanded to the CA.
Have them arenas.
Okay. Is it a conditional use?
Yeah, it was expanded to that one. So I wasn't sure if that's a policy change that we want to discuss or...
Down the list?
It's recreation slash entertainment outdoor, the CA.
Okay, so I finally understood my writing. So going back to 76, there's a statement that says, "Large retail is no longer permitted in B1." That's also a policy change, although I'm sure many people are in favor of it nonetheless. Any other comments?
Just on the section of the table, or can I get down to automobile parking garage?
Well, let's see.
Recreation and entertainment still?
Yeah.
Anyone? Storage and wholesale?
Oh, I'm sorry. Back to train a second. Recreation and entertainment outdoor, you added conditional use where it didn't exist before in the CA district.
That's what Carol just pointed out. Yep. Yep, you got it.
The reason for that is?
Well, we combined some uses and that's why it's expanded, but it's on the list to discuss. Okay. Anything else for storage and warehouse, or wholesale? Sorry. Vehicle related?
That?
Okay, okay. So on ambulance service, it looks like B2, B3, and CA were conditional uses for the existing regulations rather than P. An automobile parking garage was all, it was new, added to RE, R1, R2, R3, R3X, R4, R5. And I think that that is a significant departure of what the intent is for parking lot in the residential zone districts.
Okay. Well, backing up for ambulance services, we combined ambulance facilities and ambulances services. And facilities were allowed in those, were permitted in those districts. Ambulance services were the ones that were conditional.
And then it looks like it was also expanded to I-1, I-2, and IP, I-1, and I-2.
Yeah, that, it's the same thing. Ambulance facilities were permitted in there.
Okay, so it's just the merging of those two things?
Yes. Yep, yes.
So in theory, the way this would work now is because they are merged, both ambulance facilities and ambulance services are permitted where P applies. An ambulance service is more disruptive because of the ambulance facility, right? So as long as we're staying. And that's the one that was P in those areas to begin with?
Yes.
Okay.
I have a question.
Sure.
In the, for the automobile parking garage or lot in the RE 1, 2, 3, what is it now?
Not allowed. It's not allowed now.
So I don't, why should it be allowed today?
We did that also with R5. Cannot have parking lot next to it, so my assumption is you can't have one in it either.
I see no reason to have a parking garage in a normal one, even if it's conditioned. What would make it, what would make the condition that it would be appropriate?
So the one that would, excuse me. Where that comes from is the off-site commercial employee customer parking on residential zone property. Excuse me, was combined into that category.
But that's different than a parking garage as far as size, scale.
It could be either one. At first, you'd like garage taken out. You don't think that's oppression, but it's watching them.
Right.
Okay. That's fine. I think we should flag this one. Yep.
I mean, I have big questions about that in residential zone, less than R3, R4. But didn't the standards call it the property in question had to be immediately adjacent to the use?
Yeah. And that's what we tried, I believe, we'll go with the use of the standard. I think we put that in the use of the standard.
Yes.
So the point was to try to integrate that concept into the use table.
Yeah.
I'm over and done.
Yeah, so if you go to, on mine, it's page 28, is where the use specific standards are for the automobile parking garage or lot.
Yeah, so that's just states.
And we took the standards for that off-site employee commercial, and it says, "In residential and T districts, you have to meet all of these requirements." And it says, "Only surface parking lot, not a parking garage is permitted." So the parking garage wouldn't be in residential districts.
Well, I think it should be misleading to stand together.
Okay.
You like...
We're standing it to the end future.
Okay.
I also... We just had a vote not that long ago to remove commercial parking from the R5 zone. Okay? So this is putting it right back again.
I think I'll have to read carefully. My understanding is the reason is this is in residential zone districts, which include R5 or the T, where it's listed as a conditional use and permitted use, and it's following, only surface parking lot, and it's located adjacent to customers and employees. It's really intended because you allow some non-residential uses in those zone districts.
Yeah.
So if you have a non-residential use in those zone districts, then you could have a parking lot for that use. And so it's not intended to be for single-family houses.
No, no, but the way we just voted said that they were not permitted in the R5 zone any longer. I mean, it was deliberately...
You think that was standalone parking?
No, it had to be adjacent to a commercial at that time. And my understanding was that we voted to not allow parking in the residential zone any longer, R5.
Okay. But that is where on the list.
I don't remember that vote at all. When was that?
Right after I got here. It was one of the first things we did.
Specific case?
Almost. There we go. So this, this, this line definitely needs to...
Yeah, let's look at that.
Well, there are two things. There are changes that have been discussed here, and Carol's comment that she'd actually like them listed separately, I think, parking lot and parking structure, parking garage and parking lot. Okay?
Okay. Other vehicle related issues? Can we move on to industrial? Yeah? So industrial general, the first section in industrial. Comments? Questions? Concerns?
Actually, I am going to go back to vehicles. So number 95, just because it's on the second, on the next page. Number 95 is a new use. I think that's a policy question.
Okay.
Okay. Just want to flag it that way. Then I have a... And I think I know the answer, but we have brewery, distillery, and winery here. We have brew pub in another section. And the distinction is that a brew pub has a restaurant attached to it?
Yes.
So are we in industrial now or are you backed up?
No, we're, we're, we have...
She was just asking a question about how the industrial brewery would use differed from the commercial pub use.
Do you have comments, questions about industrial?
Yeah, I do. Why is commercial laundry even a special use by itself?
God, that's a very good question. We have sometimes, go ahead, you have the...
No, that's good.
We often consolidate either with heavy commercial services, if we have that kind of a category, or into light manufacturing, but it's really not manufacturing. It is a service use. But it's usually in a large facility with significant traffic because they're doing commercial laundry and they're delivering uniforms usually, or tablecloths and things like that. So the question is, it's not putting something together, so it's really not manufacturing. It's a service use, but it's one. These characteristics act industrial because of the amount of truck that it becomes from. We, if you would like it consolidated, I'm interested consolidation, I may have to do it, but you had listed it separately, and I think you listed it separately, but we just kept it there. But you can see that it's almost the same as some of the other uses.
Originally, it was commercial cleaning slash laundry operations. Then we named it.
The normal place I would have consolidated would have been light manufacturing, but you allow it in B3. You don't allow it in factory, B3.
Can you think of any other commercial services beyond laundry? That it's not doing manufacturing, but it's still services?
Yeah. Catering facilities.
Event rentals.
We have played around in the office with this idea that as people age, we're going to see more meals on wheels distribution and service distribution. They have characters, they're not making anything or providing service, but the nature of services, they're putting in vehicles and driving them, so they're going to feel more like a commercial use, or a light industrial use. So if you'd like, we can broaden that.
So I think, yeah.
Perhaps broaden it into a...
Maybe that's something for us to think about is, you know, to not make, you know, to have some longevity to what the intent of this is, is if it's commercial services, which includes laundry and may include other types of things.
That's a good call.
That makes sense. Question about brewery, distillery, or winery? When I did try to do a side-by-side comparison, I couldn't find brewery, distillery, or winery. It wasn't in the old use table. Somebody told me it was elsewhere in the code. What is, where is it currently allowed in the code? In those three districts, the B3?
Yes.
I-1 and I-2?
Yes.
So that doesn't change?
15.53 and 18.
If you say so. I don't... Thank you.
Hold on, I didn't follow that because your, so your note says that it was heavy manufacturing, which would have only been allowed in...
We normally treat it that way.
Oh, we...
But we, but you have treated it differently and more broadly.
Okay.
And so we...
That's why it was called out differently.
It's unlikely you're going to get Budweiser, so the facilities that you're going to get are going to probably be...
It's possible.
We have Budweiser right now at Breckenridge Brewery.
I don't eat the beer, I mean the flight.
We're making bud at Breckenridge.
Is that right? I didn't know. All right, eh? Well, I guess what I'd say is over that. But the scale of that is not like Budweiser plant, but it's more likely small.
I doubt that they can bud place.
You know, I think one of the distinctions that I would like to see made is the issue of a brew pub or a wine pub, if you want to call it that, because the winery's going to be serving food. And the Breckenridge Brewery serves food, so it's sort of a brew pub and a brewery?
Well, there is that sense.
So if I put a brew pub in somewhere and all of a sudden, I've got an acre and a half, and now I'm going to be doing more than just what's going to be consumed on site?
Let's just take a look at that. Take a look at that. I think you're raising the other point. Does the Coors Brewery become a brew pub because they have a tasting room?
It has a brew pub.
I know, that's my point. That's particularly your point, which is that the distinction between the two, you just could be clear.
Right.
So brew pub is defined as a brewery, distillery, or winery that contains a tasting room, a retail sales room located in the same building as a manufacturing facility and where food may be served or sold as accessory to the primary use.
What did you say?
Well, it's in the definition.
Forty-four. It's in the definitions.
What was it?
Forty-four.
Forty-four.
Yeah.
Well, let me head you off here. This is a sign of the fact that we wrote this a year ago. More recent codes that I've written have put a volume cap on brew pubs. It's usually 55,000 barrels of beer is the one that I've seen in most codes. If you do more than that, then you are an industrial brewery, regardless of the fact that you offer tours of beer to your visitors. Up to that point, we can look, I would cross-check that against the liquor licenses and rules and volumes, but you need to set... Ken's point is right. You need to set a volume level, and you can't be bigger than this. It's definitely a brew pub. You need to set a volume level, and you can't be bigger than this, it's definitely a brew pub.
And last time we talked about add use of the future, about definition, term for use, more terms than extended uses. So I could just ask some.
I think, I think we got to be kind of specific too about that, because the, the specific case with Breckenridge Brewery is that the, the liquor board ruled that they could meet a certain cap with each LLC that they have, so they can, they can actually brew a lot more than.
So if they have three LLCs on site, if you brew X amount for each one?
Yeah, it was an attempt to keep them from moving to New York, or expanding to New York rather than staying in Colorado. That's why they were able to build this larger facility. Because they were already at that cap where they couldn't have a restaurant anymore. They were considered to be a brewery.
It's clearly something that's been, because it's prone to common, you know, signs on that.
Right, right.
Raising it allows you to keep a valuable contributor coming. But if everybody did that, people would suck, it's like, that's not a good value. Those are pretty big for a brew pub.
Or maybe the restaurant could be an accessory use too.
All right, it's.
Solid waste recovery recycling facility seems, it's new, so I don't see your footnote in this. Why separate it out? I mean, I know we didn't have one, but what do you see those being?
So recycling facilities are becoming more and more common in, in communities. And they are not the same as a solid waste landfill or collection. So it, it's a new use that, that proceed more often, and we put it in there?
We could combine them, but I think we've seen some places where they would allow some of that in lighter, some types of reprocessing of recycling materials. It's not anything manufacturing. They would treat it as light, and be more generous than they would allow. Plantville, you want to limit to your most restrictive zone.
Well, yeah.
We did do that, but I, we did it to highlight it, but also because you may want to treat it generously.
In, in the future. And the other thing is, it may be separate on a separate site from an infill, or a landfill, sorry. So this would allow it to be on its own site?
Okay, I just didn't know if it's solid waste recovery, is that different than recycling facility? Are they different enough where you would treat them differently?
Definition.
Yeah.
Go ahead and make a definition.
The definition says, any use of real property for the transfer, storage, separation, and other processing or recycling of waste materials in both.
I think, I'll tell you what my recommendation is. List them separately and add a C and I one, because in fact, there are, there is not nearly as bothersome a use as landfill or solid waste facility.
Yeah.
What they are is.
Yeah, there's.
Her point is, so why do they both have Cs?
Right.
Answer is, you generally don't want to combine anything with a landfill, because then people won't vote for it. Because, you know, the hearing will go down because it could be a landfill. Yeah, they're getting a recycling facility today, but it's the same use. So tomorrow, they can decide to be a landfill, I'm not voting for this. And so.
Right.
But the point is, so I would list it separately, but there's a separate policy question. Whether you want to allow it more broadly. It's a growing, it's a growing industry, and most of them are not notches uses. They're done in a closed facility, and they take stuff. You know, it's a great thing. You take stuff, it's worn out, you process it, then you ship it on. Ship it on, yeah, they're recycling, and you ship it on to somebody who knows what to do. So what's on the list?
Anything else of the general industrial section? Utility and communications?
Like, yes, wind was added to towers. Is that also the guise of being green and allowing small wind energy conversion systems, or?
Yeah, it is a, under the rules or using, that would be a policy thing. But all new codes that we've written the last several years include.
The swags, the small ones, or a swag, a smaller one?
Yeah, a wax.
Wax.
A wax, yeah.
So the note says that that's a new use, so is radio, television, transmission, and wind generators a new use? Or is it just the addition of wind generators a new, or number one oh five?
I believe wind is the new use.
I think this is one of those cases where there was some language, never named as a tower, but there was, I think, language in the current code which actually covered towers. And so you move that, that's why it's P all the way across. Because you had some language kind of saying you could do it, but you hadn't listed it as a land use. So we can't.
Yes, intended to see as radio transmission towers, wind generators, and similar structures. So I assume it's combining that as.
Just to, I can trick that here. Is there any, maybe I'm not looking the right place, about the style of towers? Something that blends into landscape, or has an architectural significance?
Design standards.
It should be in the, it should be.
It's.
Page thirty-four?
Yeah.
Thirty-four.
Towers, other?
Most of the regs that you had focused on.
These are the existing regs that are in there now.
I'd like to flag this as a discussion.
Discussion.
Tower style.
And to expand the, the standard for towers?
Yeah. That would be a lot of towers.
We use a lot of towers.
And we should have put this on.
Just don't make them look like pine trees, because they never really do.
I was going to say, what about those like pine trees?
Well, and also, we live in a world where technology changes, and we may be able to take towers down if it's possible.
It's a good.
I like the fact that it's required total locating.
Well, would a member of the Supreme Court of the Federal Communications Commission help us with that? Yep. They basically put a gun in where he had, said, "Evo, evoke."
Utilities and communications?
So I do have a comment on this. So there is a, retitled from current, asked the question, please confirm whether these are P or C uses. Who will confirm that? Alison?
We put it out for staff.
Which, I'm sorry, which one?
One oh six.
Oh, six, where?
So.
Add it to the list.
This is just, I agree with the wrong answer. This is kind of a standard thing. Yours, you had some language which implied that they were fine anywhere as long as they meet the standards. And most of these say big stuff that is need, needs to be.
Yeah. I'm glad that was fun.
Okay. You ready for accessory and temporary uses? Yeah?
Farm stand or farm market, used, when the A one, RS, and RL used to be permitted, now they're accessory. The reason behind that is?
Well, when we read your current text, it seemed like it was written before then as an accessory use. Your current code didn't just state, didn't, didn't, I think.
It said P, but it meant, but if you read on it, it meant accessory?
That's what I think happened. Somewhere, do you remember differently?
I don't.
Most farm stands, most codes that address farm stands and farmers markets are assuming that they're going to be on somebody's parking lot somewhere. They're not a primary use. They're using a school, they're using a shopping center. So, and, and when you look at where they're allowed, when you look at all these places they're allowed, we, you kind of say, were they intending to allow a freestanding vegetable market? A, something that operates all year round or all day, you know, nine to five as a, like a, like DeNardo Market is going up in the neighborhood. And when we look at this, I don't think that's what they were looking at. You think they were looking at the kind of things you get on Saturdays where people sell produce, and then on Sundays, gone. So he interpreted it as being.
So like a, like a, in a, a shady crop area, five-acre lots, maybe RS or RL. Somebody could just pop up a little rickety stand and sell his tomatoes for an afternoon. No arrangements for parking, although I assume further in, there's parking requirements.
Well, no, I can tell that you're not in favor.
No, no, just, I might be one of those sellers.
As it stands right now.
Yes, yes.
If I could see somebody doing it every weekend, it'd get to be a real nuisance. You know, occasional, once or twice during the summer.
So that begs the question of, should it be a T or an A? Because an A would suggest there could be a permanent fixture there.
Really?
A T, well, yeah, but A, yes, you can't just go to a vacant lot and do it. It, it, it's something that goes along with a primary use of the property that's happening there. So it is.
If it's a, if it's a vacant lot, you can't just pop it up.
Because there's no prime use point.
I, I think the risk here though, and maybe this is up for discussion, is in some cases, like an R five, should it be a T instead of an A? Like, do you want a permanent little shack there?
No. I'd say make it the whole, it doesn't have to be conditional, except for maybe.
T, you mean T, temporary.
A one.
So let's talk about this for a minute. There are two things before we get further into the accessory and temporary uses. Number one, I want everybody to understand, what are listed down here, I'm sure some are explaining, are things that are only accessory or temporary. If it could be, if we listed in the table somewhere as a permitted or a conditional use, or a V use, so that it could be, if it's listed in the top half of the table, and it's allowed some places as a P, and some places as a C, some places as a B. And also, you have some residential or other districts where you would allow it as an accessory use. Those As appear above the line here. That, that, if it could be, could be also a primary use of land, or a permanent use of land. And those, all those letters happen above this band of the table. What is below the band of the table here is things that only appear as accessory or temporary uses. So I guess some of these things, you come saying, well, why don't we list it? Answer, if you go to the top of the table, you'll see that is listed. Because it's a primary use, and it allows an accessory use in some of those ones. That's just a clarification I want to make. But the second thing I want to make is this, and I think it's going to come up, so I'm going to head off of the pass. Most codes, eighty percent, three-quarters of them, nine, somewhere in there, eighty percent, I'll say, of the codes that we write, say it is accessory or temporary. There is no such thing as a conditional accessory use. That if you are doing the primary use, this is something you can do. And if we're concerned about its impacts, then we limit the amount of time it can be done, how many times it can be done. We require parking, we require screening, we require distancing and setbacks. But the point is, you're not going to go to a hearing on this. This, if, when we put our A in the cell, it means if you're doing something legal as a primary use on that property, or a conditionally primary use has been approved on that property, this goes along with it, and we handle its impacts. A minority, one out of five codes that we write, people can't, people want to have such a thing as, I know your hotel is fine, but I want to have a hearing on the accessory use. I want to have a hearing on, on the restaurant, or whatever it is that goes along with the spot. Whatever it is that is, that the norm, we would say, normally we would say that is accessory, if you're concerned about the size, and the impact, and the air, noise, and blah, 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 let's, let's deal with it with conditions. Let's not have hearings on accessory uses. And most cities go that way, but a substantial majority, twenty percent say, no, we won't have hearings. And I just, I think that may come up in this discussion. I urge you not to do it, but, but if you need to do it, that's an option. There's some codes do it on there, so.
Well, I could see the, the time of it on the, on the stand, just like.
Sure.
Oh, we have, oh, on garage sales, sure.
Sure, sure. You've been waiting for it so many times a year, or, or not.
So adding some use specific standards around that.
Yeah, so you don't knock the kid off that's, you know, got a few extra tomatoes, and he's, you know, like a lemonade stains, run some tomatoes.
Yeah.
But the guy that does it every weekend in, in Shady Crop would be a nuisance.
Sometimes, sometimes conditions that could be put on there include just that it can't be in the front setback, or it can't be near the street. And many of them say that if you're in a residential zone, this is going to be limited to a hundred square feet of this layer. So ten by ten, you're not going to set up a big thing. No, I'm just saying, you do the signs, you do the tiding, you do the setback, and you say, sell your tomatoes.
So what I'm hearing is for a farmer's market, potentially look at adding some use-specific standards to that, which right now do not exist. I had a comment on the cafeteria for onsite employees. This is also, I believe, added as an A in B one, B two, and B three districts. So I would caution us adding that as an accessory to B one and B two. That may inhibit small businesses, smaller restaurants, for a, you know, where it's a community.
In those neighborhoods, if you didn't have cafeteria, people would want to.
Right, right.
I have a general question about temporary use.
Sure.
My, my sense is that if there's a temporary use, that it requires a permit. It doesn't just automatically happen. That it requires it. It requires a permit, and there are conditions on the permit. Time, traffic, parking, could be any of those things.
All, all.
But I think that it needs to be explicit. And, and I read temporary use here, and it says permits for listed temporary uses may be approved.
Okay, you're looking at page, which page?
I'm looking at on page two.
Yeah, okay.
And, and my statement is that if it's a temporary use, it must require a permit.
That's a good call. I think that's a draft issue. But let's just clarify, before I shoot the mail off, how are you doing now? Do you issue permits for temporary uses?
Yes.
Okay, now the administrator?
Yes.
So we will clarify, we're all clarifying. No, I'm, I'm.
Well, administrator, I, I, I think that that's good. I don't think you want to come.
Well, that's, we, I agree. I mean, I, in general, I agree. I have had some clients, so, so just everybody understands, you do have to have a permit, and it's a good start, but you got to meet the standards. And each one of the temporary uses, we have use specific standards, if you want them longer or shorter, we change them. Same, that's fine. That, that makes sense. We, I have had some clients that looked through those temporarys and will say, I'm not going to do temporarys for garage, for garage sales.
And we don't.
Oh, you didn't.
For the garage sales.
So I guess, let's get down into the table. Because if, if it is something that you want to limit because of its impacts on neighbors, and it's only going to be, but you don't want to issue permits for it. You just can't keep track of all the garage sales and church cart washes that are going on out there, then we, we might change it to accessory, put some timings on it. Because that doesn't require a permit. That, that you could say, and then more than four times a year, da-da-da-da-da-da. But it's a good distinction, but, but I, Ken's point is right. If it says T, it's going to require a permit, but the city cannot or will not take care of that. Then, then we should change it from a T to a K, and, and put the timings in that.
And right now, garage sales does have a use specific standard that meets the, the current requirement. You can only have one per county.
Yeah, my, my, my big issue was the last four.
Yeah. Well, let's take a look at that.
And, and the one that I think of the most is something like a, a temporary concrete patch plant.
Yeah.
And, and I understand that, because I permitted them, and I know all about.
Yep.
And, but.
We agree.
It requires a permit.
We agree.
Must.
But let's look back up when we go down. What did Barack say? If they're not issuing permits now, then I think we should change those.
I agree.
We have policy, it's a draft issue. We should change it. And A was, we misinterpreted how Clinton's doing this.
That makes sense. Home occupations, you made it accessory where it wasn't before in the B one, B two, and B three. A current use table doesn't allow residential in, in B one, B two, and B three. So why would you bother?
It doesn't be one and B two.
What's that?
It doesn't be one and B two.
What kind of residential?
It's the one where it's not to exceed fifty percent.
That's that clause buried way back in there. Okay.
But B three, you're correct. Currently, there's no residential use allowed.
I assume that last time you were doing, flag those issues where we have added residential business as policy?
No.
We, we flagged them.
It's a general comment. They're pointing out that home occupations is more.
And my, and my response is, generally, home occupations are allowed everywhere people can live.
Yeah.
So this is tied up with whether you agree with the decision to allow residential.
Yes, correct. Got it. Yes, sorry.
I have one, under the raising of garden crops, I assume you mean vegetables and zucchinis and stuff like that. Why not in B one, two, or three? If I'm in an office building and wanted to add a garden on my roof for my employees, why would I be restricted from doing that?
As, as the catch, we could do it, often people envision those yards and the.
You're right.
If I wanted to put in my parking lot, send a bush, why can't I do that?
Restaurants are doing that a lot now.
Yeah, if you want to, make that change, or is this a policy thing?
I suppose it's probably has to be a policy thing, but.
I have time.
Lot of shaking head, yes.
So Don, I think this is what you were referring to when you were making a general comment of things that belong here or that are also somewhere else. So the question that I have is when we look at pigeon keeping and raising of chickens and garden crops, et cetera, at, at the last meeting, we talked about agriculture and we asked, well, what about pigeons? What about, so why are these here as opposed to an allowed use, a use specific standard under agriculture or urban agriculture? Like, why, why are we creating yet another line here as opposed to?
While it's possible, it's just a mistake, but I'm going to take it along.
Because I think they're, if I'm remembering correctly, they're currently accessory uses, not primary uses.
And you do require a primary to be there to be done. You can't just take a lot and plant on it.
So if they don't include it in agriculture, agricultural, then someone could have a lot with just pigeons on them.
Oh.
Right now, pigeon keeping is accessory. So you have to have some other use.
Well, that is, that's right. And, and that applies to ER1 or 2. In, in the case of agriculture, though, you know, that could include pigeon keeping and chicken keeping, so.
So maybe that's a definition?
No, I'm thinking that probably we should take out the As in the A1, RS, and RL districts because you don't need to list it as an accessory because you could just do agriculture as a primary use there. Since those districts allow a primary use to raise, frankly, crops and animals, you don't have to list chickens, but the line should say that because you want to make it accessory in some places, you would not allow that.
Got it, got it, that makes sense.
In, in, in the smaller lot, R1, R2, and you allow raising of garden crops, what about for sale? So I'm gonna, I live in, right next to you.
R1, yeah.
R1, right? And I'm going to have as an accessory use, a garden in the front yard.
Ooh.
Okay, and I'm going to sell produce during the summer.
From your, from your yard or elsewhere?
From his yard.
From your yard?
Yeah, from, from my yard, right next to Mark.
Well, that's what I was complaining about before, huh?
Yeah, and I'm just saying.
Mark loves cucumbers, you know.
It's the, it's the issue of for sale.
But that usually is covered, I think we already raised it, well, we did, we raised it separately. I think what you're asking for is some use specific standards on that. We have, we don't usually volunteer because, because residents come out and say, wait a minute, you're telling me how I can garden in my, on my own property, but I'm happy to, and I'm happy to add them in the sense that many places do in the end come up and say, not in the front yard. They don't, they allow the side backyard, and increasingly, this is a change, this is a policy change, increasing, old codes don't even usually say this because it's tangled up with farming. And so you're trying to put it in here to clarify for all the urban agriculture people. If it's on your own property, and you want to grow stuff in your garden, yeah, it's fine. If you want to keep it off your yard, that's fine. But increasingly, when it is added, they do allow it to be sold. They do, and the same thing I said earlier, you may limit the size of it, you may say it has to be left, but it's hard to draw the line between a hipster who wants to spend, put his whole backyard into agriculture and sell it, and the kid who grows tomatoes and cucumbers and sells them, and an easier neighbor kid, and you don't care. So the answer is usually to say, if you, either you say no, and that's okay, or you say yes, and you just limit the size and the frequency of it, so that you, you can't distinguish between the hipster and the teenage kid in the high school, but you allow it to happen.
But if it's an A, it's an accessory, it's not temporary.
That's right, but the, but the A's, because you know what, I don't think you want to issue a permit for this. As an A, what I think you're arguing for is like the farmer's mark or like other, other activities, he wants a use specific standards that would limit where on the lot, and you may want to discuss whether sales are even appropriate. And see, as an A, A means it's accessory to something else, you're not going to issue a permit for it, but you can limit how often it happens. You can still say only between June and, June and August, and do more than once a month or once a week, whatever you want to do. You can still put a timing on there after an accessory.
Well, I, I would argue that having a line that says raising of garden crops doesn't immediately imply that you can sell those. This is just saying, raise those garden crops. So putting in these specific standards would, would take care of that.
Could it require a temporary use permit if you try to sell there and then you find out you can't do that there because there's not enough parking? You could say, we can, we can do things like that. You can make use of standard, it says you can't sell unless you get a temporary use permit. But I don't think, I think this is kind of like car washes and garage sales. I don't think you want to be.
I can sell a tomato or a chair.
You can't, you don't want to do that, you just want to tell them how often and where, and how small it is.
Well, you can, you can, and you standard the definition, you can put it there, but we've got people do, what do you call it, serial garage sales, you know, eight times a summer, then we only allow one time a year.
Yeah.
So it's not enforced, really.
Right. Oh, and that's something to keep in mind, too, is the, the resources for the enforcement of some of these requirements. That's not to say it shouldn't have, that the use specific standards shouldn't go in there, it's just something to keep in mind.
A reasonable citizen would, would, you know, put the hammer down on the next door neighbor that has three garage sales, unless it's a real nuisance, maybe they'll call it in. Normally, you just let it go. Or maybe not do it.
So just to be clear, I just, and get us moving again, pigeon keeping, raising of chickens, raising of garden crops, and raising of horses are all agricultural type of uses. We're going to take the As out of A1, RS, and RL on all of those because they are covered by agriculture. You could just move them anyway, so you don't, you don't need them, it's not an A. They don't have to be listed as an accessory use. They are covered by a primary use that you could do on that property, so.
I just have a question, it might be moved down to the net. Why are chickens called out specifically? Why not just poultry?
Oh, rename it poultry.
Like turkeys and ducks, like, and people raise those.
I think they're currently called out, aren't they?
They are, yes.
They're, they're currently called out in your code. But she's asking why.
Why not ducks?
Chickens, ducks, peasants.
We've, if you guys are willing to have a policy discussion.
Didn't that just come into the ordinance?
Two thousand nine was the reason.
The chickens did, yeah. But I think it's fair to say.
Ducks are, chickens are quiet.
Well, I want to, you'll, you'll get through. Really? You'll get through that, the problem is how far you take it from that. Is it sheep, is it goats?
Ostrich, ostrich.
Ostrich, emu.
Miniature goats.
But I think it's fair, I, I think it raises a good point. Like, why, why not, why not goats? Or where do goats fall into this? Because I don't see goats here, but I do see goats in my backyard. Not mine personally, but across the way. So, and, you know, pockas, where do those come in? And like you said, turkeys and ducks, and some say duck eggs are better than chicken eggs, so I don't know. I, I think we should broaden this. So again, we don't have to keep looking at it over and over again or making it an issue, yeah.
Ducks are part of the household pets.
They're part of the who?
Household pets.
Oh, they are?
Ducks are.
Ducks are.
The rest of those items that you listed are under livestock.
So I can't kill a duck and have it for Easter dinner?
You cannot, not in the city limits. You have to take it somewhere.
You can, you can take it to a county.
Yes.
Well, just to clarify for the record, I think what the discussion is, there's a willingness to treat it as a policy discussion because we're with you in the code, but the point is not to narrow what came in two thousand nine, to decide, to decide whether those policies should expand. Because I don't, I don't want to fight the same chicken more than one.
As fun as it was, fight that war.
Chicken, green chicken. That's what I was, that's what, we tell all our clients, there are only two kinds of cities in the world, those who have a lot of chicken more, because those who will fight the chicken.
Is there, maybe it'll come into urban agriculture. I think it was either Denver, or it might have been Fort Collins, where a couple of years ago, they do allow, there was an ordinance that passed that allowed the sale of products produced from what was grown, like you can sell jams and things like that. Where does that fall into any of this?
Well, the way, the way we think of agriculture is if it's large scale, it's farming, and I'm not sure we've covered in the definition, but I think most people would say, you operate a farm, you want to turn your food into jam, that's your business, that's what a farm is, that's fine. So you've got to have business licenses, if you're going to have to go to public health and you want to put in a public food chain, but it's fine to, you don't have to go to a factory, you can turn your food into stuff if you have a farm. In urban agriculture, usually, remember, that's a primary use, smaller than a farm. Usually, the answer is no, because there's nobody living or operating on it. That's a, that's a garden, it's a vacant lot. And you grow crops on that, it might be a community garden, you can store your sheds, you can put up, you know, you can put up shelters to keep them from throwing, throwing on the road, but that's not a, there's nobody living and operating a business, there's no, you can't turn it on there. That's the, it's a second answer. The third for backyard gardening is usually codes are signed upon it because they don't think they can enforce, no matter if they can enforce who turns their strawberries into jam, who eats them, so.
And by saying turning strawberries into jam, you're saying and then selling.
And then selling them.
Yeah, selling them.
And I'm, I'm not, I'm not really advocating it for being right, I'd say most codes that we write, old codes, somebody mentioned backyard gardening, new codes do, we've already discussed how they mention it, and you can put use specific standards. Those use specific standards usually do address whether you can sell it. They usually don't address whether you can produce it into something else because they don't think you can enforce that. Who knows whether they're making, really going to go in the kitchen and see if she's stealing those strawberries? They, they don't think so. But we can do it if you want, but most codes let that one go.
Well, but that's my point, that anybody can do that, it's when you cross over to selling them, then.
When the health department kicks in.
Yeah.
When your, when your kid is turning a cupcake, cupcake making into a business.
Well, you know, we could have a use specific standard that covers both what the law says. Any, you allow selling, but any food products that are produced on site or sold off-site have to comply with all applicable public health and safety regulations.
Yeah, there is a new rule that Colorado has for home selling of produce, or, or, you know, jams, cupcakes, whatever. Yeah.
Maybe that's what I remember reading about, that this has come up.
Let's take a look at it.
Yeah.
Don, I have a question for you, because I know that you're probably involved in this if you're doing these kinds of ordinance readrites throughout the country, what, a hundred and fifty different cities?
This is a setup if there was.
It's the, the short-term home run. But, but. No, because I know in Denver, I see what, see what's happening in San Francisco.
Right.
So this effectively says that I can have VRVO and as an accessory use in my house? Well, probably not, because I have lived in a PD.
It is on the list.
It's already on the list. Never, planning board voting on their policy Wednesday. Never, planning board voting on their policy on Wednesday.
Something to watch.
They're considering it.
Are they the final arbiter? No, council is, right?
Council, it's just a recommendation.
Recommendation by the planning board.
To the council.
To the council, yeah.
My, my point is, everybody's dealing, your point is, everybody's dealing with it, and you're exactly right, and in a whole while, we'll know more about how, on your neighborhood.
Well, see, I think it's a policy discussion.
Well, we all agree.
And I, I would say that if, I mean, Denver's going to be more into that than Little Kansas.
I'm not suggesting it's common.
So I think, no, I'm not even saying, but at least we would learn from.
And there are, I was on an airplane last night coming back, and somewhere, I've got three, there's so many good studies out there now about the impacts, it really is, it's a policy discussion, and it deserves thoughtful discussion.
On that topic, what is, so footnote number one eighteen? So how is this, so this is in our code now, we're just moving it from residential to here? And so why are we moving it?
Because it's only an accessory.
It's an accessory.
Accessory use. Okay.
But it rolls into what we talked about. It's, it's sometimes hard to decide the difference between somebody renting out two bedrooms. What is the difference between the way who rents out two bedrooms and everybody in bed? One of the prices is only a rent, the other one doesn't, you know? No, and those lines are hard to distinguish. We carried it over because you're already addressing, but when you discuss short-term rentals, we'll have to talk about where the line of things is. It's not.
Under the use specific standards for pigeon keeping, we, when council originally passed that, they required a certification to annually be brought to the planning department, zoning department. And that's not one of the use standards right now.
Is it in the code, is it in the code, or we missed it?
Right, it's in the code, it's in the code of the pigeon, yeah.
Well, do you want to keep that?
So I think it's probably good because that was part of the concern of the neighbors was that they did end up, and they licensed them with the, with the state pigeon association and everything, so I believe that was part of the discussion when they did allow for the ordinance.
Go back in and what sleeping pigeons are.
And then there's a typo on temporary retail sales or service, under the use standards, it should be WW and not BD. The last line on this page, temporary retail sales or service, under the use specific standards, it needs to be WW. And a third one, and I don't know where the definition belongs in the table, but it's the definition for household pets. What was allowed is expanded from what we currently allow.
The definition?
In the definition, it allows for multiple, and right now, we only allow cats, dogs, ducks, and rabbits, and we've added more to this list.
Like hamsters, turtles.
And that doesn't normally concern me as much, but I think we, because we limit the amount of them to three, and so if you only allowed three hamsters, you couldn't have a dog. I don't know, I mean, it's, it's just been exceeded.
Yes.
So where, where is the definition now?
It's on page forty-nine.
Meats, chinchillas.
Right, it's got a lot more than what we allow for household pets right now.
I think we must have, well, we were obviously looking at the code in this for more degrees, but.
But it only allows for four animals.
All right.
We don't have the legislative.
Right, I mean, I'm, I'm actually, it's quite interesting that it lists every single potential animal, including a chinchilla.
How do insects and fish, you know?
That's what I mean, can you only have three fish?
Well, let's talk to, let's do two things. Obviously, we need to go through here. The, is it, is it, is that a use specific standard?
It's in ten-four, yeah.
Can, but that term, use specific standard? Because the thing with animals is, we, some, you don't want to put it all in the zoning. For example, Denver, Denver animal, there's wars. When you deal with chickens, a lot of people put, some of it is zoning, and a lot of it is in the animal control. And you don't, you don't necessarily want to put all of it, because the animal control people don't read the zoning ones, the zoning has to be the zoning ones. So my, my point is, I'm, we need to, often zoning codes don't define household pet at all, it's defined in the animal code. So we should probably have discussions whether it belongs here or not. But I don't know how to explain where we, I, my guess is we picked up on your definition, or we didn't pick it up, and then we came up with the whole one off of our thousand and twenty page list of every definition we've ever written. That's what the chinchillas.
So one of the, I mean, the intent of this project overall was to modernize current use, other use updates as a part, so, I mean, to me, as we think about modernizing current use, I think that also warrants looking at definitions, and some that are just outdated because we just kept adding to it, adding to it, let's address it, like household pets, our household pets, and some words define what is allowed to be a kept animal, and what is not, like a tiger, you probably can't keep as a pet.
Please.
Against the law. So I think, I think we should just keep it broad as that, otherwise, we just keep adding to, it's silly.
Who does enforce animal stuff?
Both zoning, code enforcement, and animal control.
Okay, all right, well, okay, that's different, well, let's just make sure we're safe to exist in things that are too sensitive.
Analysts are experts, working for the city.
More comments about accessory and temporary uses?
Yeah, I want to go back to number 111. This was moved from institutions, and that is now an accessory use. So accessory, so a home care center like Primrose, oh, that's not...
This is in your home.
This is if you're bringing in to a family or...
Got it, okay.
Which is right now under home occupations.
Now, we could put it under home occupations, in general, there are a few things that we carve out, and this is normal, just because people don't expect a finding of their own occupations.
Right, that's right, that's right, that makes sense. Okay.
Okay, we're done with that, just a general, a general comment here, when I went through the existing use, a couple of categories, a few categories I didn't see. Maybe they're rolled over elsewhere. Nightclubs, I assume it's like that adult entertainment or something, that's where that probably is.
I think it's probably indoor entertainment, it's not...
Yeah.
We had nightclub listed.
Okay, teen clubs, that was, that's something specific to this code, the old code.
Yeah.
It was consolidated into out...
Indoor recreation.
Indoor recreation.
Indoor, okay.
But it has, but your current teen club specific use is an exception for period over. So we have general ones that apply to all category, and then those that apply to teen clubs still.
Okay, with the same permitting uses in certain zones?
Well, yeah, that's what we intended.
Government facilities was specific of the old code, I don't see that anywhere. Is that rolled over into offices, or?
Well, most newer codes don't have government facilities, if you treat it like what it is functional, so exactly, if it's a utility, if it is a government facility, if it's a water plant, then it's a major utility.
Makes sense.
If it's something else, if it's a government facility that's just an office building, then it's treated as office, because there's no difference between having a government workers working in an office, or private people working in an office, they drive their cars, they sit at their desks, they answer the phone, they interview, they're home. And so, it's always the same thing, so generally, we don't drive, we've tried to incorporate, and I could look up where we brought them in. But basically, we treat it like the functional thing that it is. Part of that is, because the land use thing, like, to know, partly is, what if, what if Littleton owns a building, and you decide to sell it to a private office operator, or you decide to lease it to a private office operator, or a private building owner leases you space, because you need more office space. The point is, the line between what is a private office or a private facility and a public facility is very hard to distinguish at any time. And you want governments to lease space, when that's the most efficient thing, or sell it when they don't need them anymore. But it should change whether it's zoning compliant or not, so that's...
What about, but that brings up a point.
Does that answer your question?
Somewhat, yeah.
What about police stations, fire stations, correctional facilities?
Correctional facilities named separately, yep, and I think public service facilities where we throw in police and fire stations.
That's been at least, I called Douglas County and asked about columbariums, and everybody scrambled, didn't know the heck what the columbarium was, so...
I don't either.
It's where you store columns.
You're in Douglas County, don't you? It's inert, and it's not a problem, there are no codes, but I just wondered if you want to mention it somewhere.
Okay, well, let's go.
Our church is adding one.
I'm sorry?
Our church is adding one. It's not in the city, it's just a county, but it's adding an area where people can store.
Then you have several areas, you're considering accessory use. Yeah, all the old churches south of us.
We could add it as a listed accessory use to both the cemetery and the church, if you wanted to add that.
Yeah.
It's a good catch, it is something that is not addressed by most places, people say, who cares? But if there's a question as to whether it's allowed, whether you're allowed to certain places, you know, the churches and temples and mortuaries.
That's true, because I think there's laws of where you can dispose of them, you can't just scatter them anywhere.
Well, you cannot scatter them in the national forest, but nobody pays any attention to them.
But if you do a survey appropriately in the national forest, you can be buried there.
You can be buried, but you can't be scattered, good to know.
That's a three-hour discussion, huh?
Question?
Like if we have no national forest in town.
If we're done with columbarium, I just wanted to go with, go back to services for a minute. We were talking about commercial laundries, and you talked about expanding the services, I was trying to figure out where Amazon would fit in, as an example. A retail sale distribution center, and I know there's a, up a little higher, there's wholesale sales and distribution, which I assume, if you were selling retail out of there, and just looking at the allowable areas where it was used, you know, if you spanned commercial laundry into just commercial services, where you were doing all, you know, doing anything, selling something out of a larger warehouse facility, it might fit into that wholesale sales and distribution section as...
I would go as the definition of wholesale sales and distribution, your question is Amazon, where does Amazon end it?
I mean, I was thinking of combining it too, if you were going to expand commercial laundry as a services, combining it with wholesale sales and distribution, potentially, I'm not, I'm just throwing it out, I don't know what anybody else thinks.
Actually, that was already on the list, so let's think about it, let's think about whether it could be...
They're pretty much allowed in the same areas, except the wholesale sales are accessory to B1, B2, and C8. Which, I mean, if you were, if you were a retail establishment, and you were doing internet sales, for instance.
Well, anything that's doing internet is just a bonus, I mean, if you're buying into apartments, fulfilling orders, fulfilling centers.
It just talks about, yeah, yeah, it just talks about in the code, as far as if you're selling wholesale out of a retail establishment, it couldn't be more than 50% of the business. But it seems to become kind of a gray muddle when you...
Well, it is, and then you have places like, you know, places that call themselves wholesale, but they're purely retail.
Yeah.
It's just the name of those, American furniture, or, you know.
Yeah, Costco.
It's not a warehouse, it's a retailer's store. I think that should come, let's think about it. Nobody raised a drone fulfillment centers yet.
Where they just fly right out of the top of their head.
You watch.
They just had the first major...
Battery psychology, that's what I'm saying.
First place won $15,000, it was a 15-year-old boy.
I can't believe we made learning, they didn't give a drone fulfillment center.
In the industrial zone districts, when I was in Araco County, they had, and Douglas County, like volleyball clubs and sports clubs inhabited those empty warehouse spaces. Is there, I didn't see any place where, is that something we want to consider capturing that? We saw a lot of it coming in, in the industrial spots that were, you know, empty, and needed to breathe some life in them. And it also was a good use in the evenings, the club volleyball stuff that would come in, parking was, you know, available.
I think that's an argument, even though we have V as a policy, I mean, clearly, that's indoor, is it indoor sports, it's an indoor recreation use. Your question is, should it be a V use in some of the industrial zones?
Or even just allowed if it's in the industrial, this street permitted, because we found that they wanted to come in, it was big in, you know, like lacrosse and CrossFit and...
That raises a bigger question.
Sport, jam.
But it raises a good question, which is that in some cities, some cities want to preserve their industrial properties for industry, because it's politically difficult to zone property for industry in future, most people don't want to be in labor too, even a land industrial property, so it's a political fight. I'm not suggesting that is a little, but because, once you let go of industrial land, it is hard to get it back. There are many of our clients that say, we really want to limit who can occupy the non-industrial uses that can occupy industrial properties.
That's why I was bringing it up, I just thought I'd bring it up, because it happened in Araco and Douglas.
And how did you address it? Did you, as a conditional, as a conditional?
No, just let them in.
Administrative decision.
I think, I think it's probably a function of whether your economic development folks think you have enough, or, I mean, some industrial space is never going to be occupied again. Or, nobody's going to give a long-term lease to a gym for volleyball, they're going to give them a one-year lease, if something better comes along, they're going to kick them out. But there are other uses that require more investment, but once they, once they convert that building, it's hard to convert back to industrial itself. I'm just trying to figure out this little bit, is there some industrial property, or is it just an allocation here, or is it something that will...
I think you're talking about, I mean, they're already along Santa Fe, there's, there's different, there's, in some industrial areas, there's gyms, there's across something...
So let's suggest that you're allowing them now, and maybe we should allow them.
Yeah, I mean, it's just a use that gets, you know, it's a, it's a lease that an owner, generally, I mean, I don't know that too many volleyball places are buying buildings, they probably can't afford it. So even if they did a five-year lease, the next, if the landlord in five years found something better, he'd kick them out and put somebody else in.
Well, that's a policy question, whether we ought to be just more liberal about indoor recreation, entertainment, allowing people to...
All right, thanks. If we're done with accessory and temporarys, that's the end of the chart.
Wow.
Are we really done?
I'm not going to add, I'm actually more of a confusion question, so, given that we've just gone through, let's assume that this becomes what we do next, without further discussion, say that's what it is. Do we go back at any time and look at PDOs and other ancillary, alternative names that have been given to various zones, and re-zone them at that time aligned with that? That's not what we're doing at this end result of this conversation.
Let me put a caveat on it.
If you want to pay a lot of money and I take.
And I don't want to take, no, not you, I simply just want to say, well, I look at some areas, and I look at some vacant parcels, and there's O B2 and F D O broils on them, and I say, I would like to put something use specific from an outward direction, I want to make sure it's not junk, I want to make sure it's under a certain zone set that helps us.
That would be a take.
Well, usually, usually you fix the rules, and then, in this case, because we're dividing it up, you would think through whether you need different zones. And when you create those different zones, we're going through this for, we're through this with Aurora right now, they want to think through whether, if they designed the new zones properly, they would be attractive to people who now have PDS, so that they, without taking, they would say, look, we think this is better for you than what you got now, and it's expensive and time consuming to administer what you have now, wouldn't you rather have this, but they want us to keep an eye on that, but that's, when you think through whether you have the right zone, which is really not part of this, that's how we do it.
For the developer who wants to come in, put junk apartments in a zone, I would like to have some sort of protection in place, that we can stand up and say, it has to at least meet this set of criteria that is beneficial to the surrounding community, and not simply to the property.
Are you talking about, when Kent says taking, he's, are you talking about retroactively putting those on who's already have done it, have the zoning, or people who are building in the future?
Future parcels, yeah, you can't take somebody's house as a, just ask them to change it, but if it is vacant, or distressed, or clearly in need. I know that it opens a can of worms, and if I own the property, I tell you to go take a walk.
When you're talking about vacant properties that already have PDS on them.
But right, things that, nothing's happening, I see the words PDO, and I say, well, you're not doing anything, we're not doing anything, so the rules on day one is what's going to matter.
Isn't there a lifespan to PDOs if they don't develop them?
So I think we should table this discussion. No, I think that's a process, it's a process question, I mean, what you're asking, I think what you're asking is, what does it take for us to change current zoning? Using PDO as an example of, that particular area right now is, the overlay of the existing zoning is for that particular purpose. What, what can we make that, what would be the prevailing zoning the next time that comes up for sale or development? And can we define what the next one should be?
We're faced immediately with the ensorred mineral properties being zoned PDCs, that we, as a citizenry, may ask for something totally different than what is provided.
So I think that, to me, that's a process, like, what does it take to change something like that, which is outside of the scope of this?
Because I know it's like phase one is what we're calling it, of looking at our current zoning structure and format, and working through the use table. We're going to have future phases to talk about other things, of, maybe not that specifically, but just generally, do all our zoning districts seem correct? Do we need to bring things to be added into them, can we combine zone districts, I mean, and have some of that bigger conversation about things like that. Eventually, you can also include design standards, you know.
Simply said, the scope of this work right here, valid question? But the scope of this is change in uses, or modifying, or et cetera, of uses within existing zoning, it is not changing zoning.
Kurt, now, my question was procedural, if it says PDO, does that therefore say, that was an alternative plan that was figured out under the existing map? Are we going to go back and reapply portions of that map to this, and heard that answer being, not now, not today, not for a long time, and probably never. Excepting for, there should be parcels that at least have public open discussion on what we'd like to see there, to provide imperative guidance to the staff, what we want to see developed.
With the, in the zone districts, yes.
Yeah, I'm not trying to put it controversial, I just want to simply say, there's not, you're not doing anything, we got a chance to say something. I want whatever we say to have teeth, because I'm tired of sitting in meetings where I'm told, oh, yeah, you wrote that thing, but that's really more of a suggestion, that's not really a policy. And then I say, well, why the heck could I just do that? And I want the teeth, especially in the parcels that are our greatest opportunities, that we get what we want, and we set the rules as such, because we've sat in meetings where we've been told, well, sorry, too bad for you, the rules don't say that. Well, here we have a chance to make the rules, to say, this is what we want in these particular areas, and I think we're fools to squander it.
If the, if the landowner is willing to work with the city to do that, that's fine, other than that, you will be, the city would be in an extensive lawsuit forever.
Well, here's how I...
I have forever to protect the city.
Just for them.
I have forever, yes, I do, yes, I live here, I look at this land every day, and I have the right to say that.
Here's how, here's how it usually goes, and you are well aware that it's divided in parts. Phase one is the uses, if you move forward on recommendations, then you think about the districts, because that's the building blocks of the zoning. Usually, what happens after that is the standards, whether you have the right design and help, it's prospective going forward, or development that hasn't yet happened. Then you look at the procedures you need, and the question of how you want these standards to apply to things in the city. What are the triggers? For example, it's not always a brand-new building, sometimes it's an expansion that triggers, and then you look at them, and that's how it goes, because until, until you have, kind of have a group consensus on what are the right new rules on those topics for the city of Littleton, and you're distracted to look at the map. Because you want to get the right tools, and then say, okay, so what's wrong here, and then talk about how you're about to, good point, let's not, let's not go further down that road. It is something we tackle with many clients, it's not part of this process.
So one of the things that I do want to hold for the end of this meeting, when we get through this document, is, what is the procedure for the recommendations that will come out of this? What is, what goes to the public, what gets voted on, et cetera, et cetera, so I think it's, at least I'd like to get clarity on the procedures that will help us to implement the changes that we are going to be recommending. But what I'd like to do is get through this document, so we can finish the document at least today, so that we could move on to the next phase to say, well, here's now all of the policy issues that we're going to address, and make a recommendation to change, and then understand what happens in order to make those changes a reality, not just the, something we put on our, so if we could do this.
Well, so we're done with the table, unless anyone else has any other questions, and a lot of the use specific standards have been covered in the discussion of the table. So I think unless someone has a burning comment or question about the use specific standards or definitions...
Well, I have one.
Okay.
I just have a question about nightclubs, I actually have two questions. Somebody gave me an example of a nightclub that exists in Littleton. And it says, establishment that dispenses liquor and meals must, if the liquor and meals, could it just be liquor and not meals? And can somebody give me an example of one?
Where are you reading nightclubs, is it the definitions, or is it the use cases?
Yeah, part three, the use-related definitions.
Before we get to part three and definitions, does anybody have any comments on part two, which is the use standards?
Yeah, I got a bunch.
On part two?
Yeah, probably ten.
So hold that, until we get to that section.
My sense is that the cottage and field development was discussed at the last meeting on the 29th, and I wasn't here, and I apologize, but I don't need to talk, but there's gonna be more discussion about it.
And, and go ahead.
The whole issue of the manufactured home or trailer on page 12. Discussion on fireplaces on page 13, under 2.3. I mean, was there any discussion about that?
I had that same question, I raised it and sent it to Jocelyn. Because it doesn't appear that gas fireplaces are specifically included in 2.3.
So this comes from your current standards?
This comes from your current, but most codes do not have a, a comparable dressing of fireplace in the neighborhood. Something came up in the past, led you to address this, so we're happy to. I don't have one, I've never seen one before. I mean, what research did you want?
They have to be to certain standard, they have to be only capable of being so many inches away from the wall. And the manufactured home has to be built to a certain standard, it can't be 376, and it has to be installed by a plumber, and it has to be inspected as for a manufactured home. But they are common use in areas that get really cold. And it can be wood, or it can be gas, or electric. Usually they stay away from the electric, because it puts a lot of stress on the electric. But, gas is very common, and it just has to meet certain standards.
My suggestion on this would be, maybe somebody on staff could just ask the building folks, whether, this seems maybe something that the building code would handle. That the manufactured home code, as to how you have to build these things, also addresses modifications. And I bet, I bet we're getting something that the building departments would check anyway, against the old standards, which are more specific like this.
On page 16, under animal boarding, number six, isn't it really animal boarding overnight? Not dogs, because it's more, that's more specific.
Domestic pets, perhaps?
This also comes from your current standards.
Pardon me?
This comes from your current standards, so.
I'm just saying, up on top, it says animal boarding or care.
Can we just agree that since every other part of this deals with animals, and it says, dog boarding overnight should house an individual indoor secured kennel when staff is not present, I think probably whoever drafted this can add to apply generally. It's up to you, we can say it's a policy issue, or it may just be a drafting issue, that out of the nine things that are said here, one says dogs.
Why would we, but why would we regulate how a dog is secured in a kennel versus a cat versus a mouse? Like, why would that be part of a code as opposed to part of?
You're saying just animal, barking?
No, it's, what, when they did this, they didn't want dogs outside at night, for the barking. Whoever wrote this said, barking dog problem, and we could lead it that way, but the point is, there's also a more general, called animal outside noise. And it probably deserves changing to the animal.
I want my ducks to be boarded here.
Whoever wrote this, I was thinking about dogs, well, if they meant, well, we don't want noise from animals.
Yeah, so any animal should be in it.
This just seems very, very specific.
It's probably just crude overtime, gotta add it in, or nobody, maybe there's the fact that it's dog. Okay, next one, Kent?
Probably a lot less than ten.
It's fine. Well, Kent, let me ask a question, and then we'll discuss it in a little more discussion. Do people are rich in teen clubs, they are a thing in Littleton? Are they, are they still current? We don't see that news very often, I mean, somebody don't see separate standards for it.
I wanna know what a teen club is, and I'm not gonna let my daughter go wrong.
Underage, no alcohol, on your teenage.
That's the rec center.
We rolled it into indoor recreation, so it's not a use anymore, but we carry forward the use-specific standards, my friend, is if there ain't none, and there aren't gonna be any, then the question is, do you need the standards?
Or you just dump it and sort of roll over.
That's the indoor recreation in general.
I think we follow the indoor recreation.
We know it's indoor recreation, the point is, do you wanna regulate teen clubs different than other indoor recreation?
There are use-specific standards.
No, I just wanted to know where would be, where'd you stuff it? And it turns out you've got indoor recreation. Is there a definition that says, girls must wear dresses past their eighteen?
No, the fathers didn't get to have anything.
Alright, let's go on, Kent, you find your next one?
Well, I, I really only one more. And this may have been discussed on the 29th. Page 17, beekeeping, L. Now, this is a definition that speaks to beekeeping almost anywhere in the city. What about a PD that does not speak to beekeeping?
Are you asking legal question, or whether?
Yes.
Well.
The current code for beekeeping only allows it in a single family.
Okay. So that's, that's very explicit.
But you know.
That's good, thank you.
So if there's a PD, so if there's a PD overlay on an area that has, so I'm thinking about Littleton Old Marathon Oil Property. Will they be allowed to have, Littleton Village, thank you. So are they gonna be allowed to do beekeeping? No, because it's not considered.
This is planned development.
Okay, so where it's drafted now, it's only explicitly allowed in certain places. So if you have a PD that doesn't talk about bees, you're out of luck. If you wanted to talk about bees, you had to talk about bees.
You're allowed with bees.
Well, it's only, it's only allowed.
Your code says only single family, but what if I come in and say, I want you to approve a PD?
Oh, with P D R.
X Y Z and bees.
Alright.
That's it, thank you.
Alright.
I just wanted to offer, we have a couple people who are not here tonight, though they did give me some written comments, so I'm passing those on to the, to some of that, listening to some of their comments, so we'll make sure we capture their, including whether or not.
Yes.
The only place that colonies are mentioned is number four.
Yes, that is a title that should be any.
Because you defined it so well. Can we that twenty-five feet of the property?
Yes.
Ready for that? Anybody?
Let, let, let me just say that I thought that the use-specific standards were pretty comprehensive, or very comprehensive, and welcome.
Thank you. Well, that's why they need a couple, because, thank you for the comment, and you guys, you guys know the whole what we need to talk about.
Yeah.
Definition?
Well, I just said, definitely a nightclub.
Yes, the answer is, well, I can't give you the examples, the, the food and drink is deliberate to prevent people from saying it's a nightclub, when in fact it's just a bar. And so, that, the point is, it's supposed to be a club that serves.
So a nightclub has to serve food, aside from like pretzels or something like that?
Well, can you find it more specifically about this? This is a buckaboo and hall code, is it enough to offer frozen burritos?
Just, just a question, is, can anyone name a nightclub in Littleton?
No, that's why I have nothing to do on Friday night.
Yeah, it's like music, dancing, where?
Bar and tavern.
Well, Dee's Tavern, they have a big area.
But why wouldn't we have a nightclub?
But it's like a disco.
Sure. A large area. I mean, what's the difference between it and a bar? I mean, they have, they have. I think there's kind of a silly distinction myself.
Is that like a concert venue?
No, a nightclub, did you, back up to a nightclub when you were in college?
What's the difference between a nightclub and a bar? That's, I mean, Dee's Tavern.
There's music.
The definition for bar shall not include dancing.
Oh, that's wrong.
Dee's Tavern's, you know, DJs.
Whoever's, whoever drafted this, was trying to clarify for citizens the difference between a bar, a restaurant, and a nightclub.
And a rooftop.
So, when you say whoever, was this, are these definitions that are in our code now?
Excuse me, there are terms in your code that were undefined.
Okay, so these are new terms, and the definition you guys have sourced from where?
Their new definition.
From a thousand-page document we have.
Wikipedia, no.
Pretty much, clarifying. But I will say this, this has, we have codes that don't, are, we might sum separately. They just, they're kinda say, there are, but it gets, the more, this is an area where you wanna collapse as much as possible, but you run into problems. At some point, you could have eating, eating establishment, which we've drafted, and drinking establishment. But then you gotta define how much eating makes it a non-drinking establishment. How much it would, by volume, by dollar, by square footage, by watt. My point is, at some point, you can get smarter than you wanna get, in trying to consolidate because it's impossible to define, so, this two-way three categories is probably okay.
The issue with, that we've seen, when you include nightclub with bar and tavern, is the nightclub part is if you allow a band to come in. Some people are okay with having a bar, where you can have, you know, a jukebox, but they don't want, in one zone, but they don't want the live entertainment, because that's a bigger, louder deal.
Well, they, almost all bars in, almost all bars, I mean, Jakes, that Dee's Tavern on Littleton Boulevard, they all have. Let's combine them off, that's what I said.
That's the same way you say, don't have definitions for nightclub. And include, they included in a bar, in a, in a bar tavern. And then say, and if you're worried about noise, which is the issue, it's not that people care about dancing, it's the noise in terms of, then you say that you can only use amplified music in the following zone districts, or if you're gonna use amplified districts in something that's a mixed use, you gotta get a temporary use permit for that, for whatever you wanna say. Or a conditional use permit for the amplified music, so that you just have unamplified. Now, who's gonna play Kumbaya on his guitar, who cares? He wants, he wants to bring in the Rolling Stones, you wanna know about it.
Well, that, I mean, yeah, I mean, let's get to the crux of the, of the issue, and be transparent about what we're trying to get at.
It sounds, right.
I think nightclub is on the policy list. And footloose is too.
Required doing.
So honestly, no, honestly. But maybe, maybe it's not, I wonder how Denver treats this, because they do have nightclubs.
This is, it's probably just kind of an anachronistic term.
Yeah.
I think you're right.
No, they have clubs in Denver, they have.
But we don't here.
But the, but the use kind of blends together.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I mean, when I go to Jakes, there's usually music.
Yeah, there's bands there, but, but I think that the issue of the amplified music, I think that's a good point.
I think they call it a club.
I'm having with you.
And I have a question, right?
Oh, I just had a question, just kind of overall. We refer to marijuana a lot in here, retail testing and all kinds of stuff, but I didn't, I didn't see medical marijuana referred to specifically. Did I just miss it, or?
No, you didn't miss, marijuana needs to be included in this as.
But I mean.
Yes, specifically, yes.
I had the same question.
I have a question. Accessory use or structure?
Yes.
Page thirty-nine, number five, at the bottom there, does not occupy more than fifty percent of the area of the lot. That seems, is that the present standard?
I would assume yes, because you don't have a footnote for it.
It has to be smaller than to be subordinate to.
It seems high to me, if it's accessory.
Usually when that, yeah, you're right, fifty percent sounds high. Usually when that's happening, it's because people have large garages or barns on their property. If you said twenty-five percent, it's a barn bigger than the house, or a shed could be bigger than the house. So, we're happy to put in whatever number was.
Well, this is the gross floor area too, it's not the entire lot.
Well, the second piece talks about the lot, yeah, this is, this is lot area.
Does not occupy more than, if operated outside the primary structure, does not occupy more than fifty percent of the area of the lot, so it could be forty-nine percent. So it's under the fifty percent mark, but you're, it's under the fifty percent mark, but you're saying fifty percent still seems high.
One second. I have a ten-inch lot, and I'm saying I have an accessory use on the lot.
One of the things you could do is limit that to. It's intended to deal with large agricultural projects. But the point is, so limited to there, and put a thirty percent or a twenty-five percent. But I would ask staff whether you see problems with that, or do you have, if you got very small lots, a garage can take up a fair percentage of that lot, so this would, no, I never could think of.
Currently, our code says ten percent of the lot not to exceed a thousand square feet.
So, we missed that, or we conflated it.
It's in chapter four.
So, it's in chapter four.
The supplementary standards, where a lot of stuff gets missed.
Okay, so, good catch, good catch, we should distinguish between the two.
Thank you, Steph.
There's still some fifty percent, so we.
I'm moving into your neighborhood.
We had a discussion around that once.
Well, just, I'll, I'll throw out that, under accessory uses, number four, when I was reading through that, does not include residential occupancy, just as a policy issue. You know, if we, if we approve a, the VRBO or Airbnb, then that is inconsistent with.
You're saying that if those were allowed, then the numbers wouldn't work?
Well, the number, number four, under accessory use and structure would be, I think you, you were actually in.
If you decide to allow them, you can change that.
Don, the, in our accessory structure, ten-four, four-A, five, it's the exact number is number five. Partially operated entirely within a primary structure.
Yeah, that's a different section than the other one.
Yeah.
Yeah, while you go through this exercise and try to get them together. Yeah, but, but, okay, so we, let's talk about, but, our experience is, it's really hard to address. The issues of accessory structures and accessory uses are intertwined. It's helpful to help address in one place rather than another, just because, I mean, swimming pool is a structure, it's also a use, particularly, or if you had an outdoor, you had an accessory use in your garage, the fact that you can't have the accessory use restrictions disagreeing with the accessory structure provisions, often they're the same, often the structure goes with the use. So we just need to think them through together, I don't wanna separate them, even though your current code sometimes deals with right-hand, left-hand, we're trying to get them together. We got them wrong, we'll straighten them out, but it's still better to address them together.
I agree.
Just try explaining this to a citizen, you know, the difference between why you have this rule for accessory structures, and that rule for the use that's in the accessories. Five months, I see you've been finding out different units with this.
More definitions?
So, are we going through each of these definitions, or can I just throw one out there?
If you have any comments.
Establishment, I, oh, I don't even know what page it's on.
You're just saying, the use.
Forty-six.
This was the biggest one to me, is the definition of establishment has several definitions, but the only, the only definition here is adult entertainment or adult retail sales use. That's all that's under there, which, that's obviously not the definition of an establishment.
You know, we try, when we put these in there, when, when there is, that's a classic example. If it came from your accessory, your adult entertainment, which it did, then it should have been prefaced by, for purposes of adult regulation, or adult entertainment regulation.
So it's in regard to an adult.
It does, mine doesn't, I'm sorry, you're right, it does.
Says in regard to an adult entertainment or adult retail sales use.
Which means that this, you can't read this as the. Which means that this, you can't read this as the definition of an establishment. The only, the only thing, the only time establishment is defined in your current code is in connection with adult entertainment.
So that means we should only see establishment when it's referred somewhere else in this document with adult next to it.
But that's not true.
And that's what we would have to verify.
The word establishment comes up in two different ways in, in the existing code. One is to establish a business that's listed, that shows up several times, and then the other is just a place of business, yeah. And it, the word is, the word is just listed. So if I'm looking through the code and I see establishment in either of those contexts, and then I go and just see adult entertainment, then that's kind of.
I think the right answer is for us to give you a generalist definition of establishment. But this is the kind of general term where you can't define all of them in there. So, we can add it if you'd like. The point is, legally, I think the city attorney would say, I, I don't know what you mean by establishment, when I went and read this, this one doesn't apply. The city attorney would say, I shouldn't speak for the city attorney. So we read Webster's dictionary. So we read, we compete, we, we can use it or whatever.
Right, and, and I'm not saying we define every word, but I guess my point is that you've got the word establishment here. I think you should have the definition, and then, and then maybe add the adult entertainment one below, saying in regard to.
Or, the definition is, the, the word that we're defining is adult establishment.
Yeah, you could say that.
Well, we'd have to, that's fine, that's fine. We need to go through.
Or establishment.
In the adult abuse regulations, that's the same phrase, that's the same.
Whatever that phrase is.
That's probably a better answer, that's probably a better way to do it. Because for the reason you just said, the word is used in so many contexts, I'm not sure a definition actually. Yeah, and in the, in its generic sense.
Urban agriculture? So I didn't understand the piece of this, one, two, three, four lines down. And it's, it starts with, and does not include the raising of animals on the premises unless otherwise authorized by this code. So it's referring to, so just that. Unless otherwise authorized by this code. So where, where do I check cross, is it, where do I cross-reference this to? Because we're defining everything you could do except for.
My, well, my answer would be that we, we take that last out, if you don't intend to do it. If you're after that just generically, meaning there could be, I suppose, some, some situation in which you wanted to allow animals, and then that would be specific to that. But the point is that it's, we can take out the phrase, unless otherwise authorized by this code. Remember, this is a freestanding primary use on vacant lots. You don't want animals raised there, because there's no one there to watch and to take care of them. So, I don't know, we have had, we have had a client in which they did offer temporary permits for people who wanted to keep animals on a site for a period of time. And they said, well, who's responsible, are you going to fence it in, who's going to take care of the animal's health? And they wanted some exceptions, so as a practice, we just put it in there. But I'm happy to take it out if you don't think there'll be any exceptions involved.
I don't know that I can speak for that. Have you guys had any experience?
Would it be, because we keep coming back to this one. Would it be helpful to say it's a, a single use on a, principal use on a lot? I mean, starting not, so it doesn't get mixed up with an accessory?
We can do that, we can do that. I think it's rare enough, I think it's very rare situation in which someone would want to have, or allow an animal to be on an urban agricultural use as a primary use of the lot. So I think we take out the, well, I mean, that's my suggestion. It's a good question, I just, I think it's unusual, it would be very rare.
And just out of curiosity, what's cutting curing, is that making beef jerky?
There's a comma.
Is the curing the making of beef jerky?
Cut, comma, curing, we should be.
Oh, this is curing the hides?
Yes.
Got it.
There are a couple of other typos in there.
Please point them out.
This should be these, and it should say include, not includes.
These uses. Yep, we got it. Kent's.
It's in two sentences, one above that as well.
Well, I think it probably said uses as well, just one typo, one use, so this use.
This use, okay.
This use and the this use of.
These uses.
Yeah, the clues is right, this is right, uses as well.
Right, okay.
Okay, any more comments on the document?
Yeah, I just, I have another, there's a minor typo under temporary laborer. It says a clerical, a non-clerical workers, plural.
Temporary.
Laborer.
Laboral, okay.
Temporary laborer. And then, I mean, apart from the fact that I'd just be in favor of removing temporary labor hall altogether. Temporary labor, it says, a non-clerical workers, plural. It's minor, but.
That's fine.
Appreciate it.
Oh, I, I don't know if, I don't know if this is appropriate, but there's a, or for now, but u- under the definition of household pet, it says something about not allowing any animal that could cause substantial harm. But we allow, to man, but we allow large dogs.
I don't think we can regulate that.
Should probably just take out substantial harm, unless you want to, you know.
We've already put her on the list, I think, I think she discussed. I, I actually, I think the bigger question is how much of this you want to try to do in its own, as opposed to animal control.
Right, right.
The longer you think about it.
Maybe take that out.
I think you want the animal folks to enforce the animal.
Yeah.
Especially for pets, but it's a group thing that you don't know where to help.
Yeah.
You don't know where the bee, you're going to know where the bees are, you don't know where the dogs are.
Right.
Just a question that's coming up, where do we address food trucks, or how, where does that fall under?
Gosh, that question comes up every week. We, we haven't addressed it in here, we can, I think we should put her on the list. Here's the, here's the difference. Is it, it is already, did we deal with it before? That, the issue is, we've agreed to do some research on the, the following case. If you are just driving, if you're driving on the public streets, you're under police regulations. You either have a licensed truck that you allow, or you don't. If you're parking on Kent's parking lot, that's just between you and Kent, unless the city says you can't for some reason, and you may want to not in some cases, but the point. Now, the, the question that's come up is, one about, just as we talked about vacant lot, urban agriculture, what if you have a vacant lot, and the guy says, I would like to rent it out to ten trucks every alternate month? Can you have that as a temporary, or, it's not an accessory use, because there's nothing else on this vacant lot, it's something you're allowing to have happen.
Yes.
And we've been asked to research best practice in that area, and I don't know them, but we have agreed to start researching, so we'll bring you whatever we can find out.
Bring in the health department, too.
You have to, you have to. I mean, all the trucks have to be health, but they have to.
Actually, that's, that's, that's what happens at farmer's market, have food trucks now. So it's an expansion of what is now, you know, what is a farmer's market. So sometimes, they call them markets, but maybe there's only one stand selling tomatoes, and everything else is a truck. So I think it's, it's, it's in the same vein, it's just an evolution of.
What, what about if they just park on the street, in front of a bar?
That's their way to serve food, yep.
Does the police allow it, or they don't allow it? I know, but I'm, but I'm driving, I'm getting at here is, we had this question come up with election, what about a truck with the mayoral candidate's picture posted all over it? Is that a sign? Yeah, but when he drives it down the street, it's a motor vehicle, and the police tell you whether you can drive down the streets and park it or not. When you take it onto my property, I can tell you, and the city may want to tell me, no, you can't put all the candidate's trucks on your property, that's, we treat it as a sign, you can't do that. But my, my point is, there's a line between the public right of way and private. We need to, when we think about these different uses, we need to think about when and how they happen on private property, because that's what zoning connection.
Okay, that makes sense.
Food trucks is on the list from us.
Okay, right, right.
It's a really tough one, because, think about what you just said. You've got farmer's markets, you may think you know what they are. We would normally not list food trucks as an accessory use to a farmer's market, but they show up all the time. And if we tried to list food trucks as accessory to everything anybody might, anytime you have a grand opening of any store, you could invite the food trucks. Anytime you have a festival at the outdoor shooting range, you invite the food. We can't list it everywhere it's going to show up, and so, question is, how far down that road do you want to go? Or do you want to say?
Well, I wonder, I wonder if the purpose or the intent of a food truck, does it fit into some other category naturally?
I don't think so.
They, they literally could be anywhere. I mean, I was at a, at a art show down, down in Denver at City Park, there were four or five food trucks there. I was at a grand opening of a, of a, of a building that's a, a real estate company bought, and there were two food trucks there. I mean, they could just be anywhere.
Are there a couple of things?
I mean, it's a catering service, I mean, it's acting as a.
A, it's a new industry that's supporting people. B, people tend to think they're exciting, it may, I, I'm just throwing this out. We may have to look at how different people deal with it on private property. You may decide, we may, Clarion may say, you know what, why don't you not address it, and wait and see where, when it becomes a problem? Because then you'll know what the problem is you're trying to address right now. It's not clear what the problem is.
I don't think there is a problem.
And you may never, well, if you have twenty of them on the parking lot next to you every Friday night, you'd get tired of it eventually, but we don't know that that's ever going to happen.
Although, that was the argument of the whole sharing economy, is wait till you see it, it becomes a problem, then it becomes so mainstream that you're like, ah, it's hard to refute now. But anyway, so just because it's nine o'clock, and I know we want to wrap up, a couple of things that I just noted between the last session and this session, as far as categories of the things that we've seen, all the notes that we've taken. So to me, what I've heard is, there's a number of true new uses. So new uses would be a new line on the table. So I'd like to make sure we identify, as we get to, we have to have discussions on all of these, so I want to have a discussion on new uses. The second one is, they're existing uses, but we're putting them in a new section, right?
Like on the Godville, this, this, the.
The re-categorization of you two.
The future items, or?
Correct, so, you know, coming, kind of coming back to, there's tons of notes everywhere, and I want us to be efficient going through addressing some of these open questions and comments. And so, to me, I'm just trying to categorize them on what is a bigger deal versus less of a big deal. So like I said, the first one is truly new uses that we're introducing. The second is existing uses, but we're introducing them in new places. The third is a combination of uses, and the fourth is corrections. And those were kind of in priority of maybe severity of, or to the degree of the change. The first being the biggest change is truly a new use, et cetera. So those are the four that I picked up on. And then the last thing, if we, if I can still keep everyone's attention, is coming back to, once we get through all that, what is, what happens next? Do we make changes to this document, put it out for public comment? We approve a recommendation to council? So can you talk about the procedure of the changes? And it may be different depending on if it's one new use, two existing use, three. So can you talk a little bit about the procedure to make this real?
Well, as you know, any ordinance update or change formally would be coming through planning board for a recommendation and then to council with formal adoption. That's how we would make whatever changes we recommend to be permanent in the zoning ordinance. So that's generally how we would need to make a final document that we wanted the city to adopt.
So that's what this would be. This would be, we will vote on a recommendation of all the changes we end up agreeing to?
With the caveat of, we've got several things we need to get through on that list of items to talk about, and it may be that some of them are even bigger than we feel comfortable with.
So we may not, we may, we may take those off the table.
So it just depends on, you know, what direction some of that conversation happens, and where we want to go with it. And then the other part that I think is a component, we still haven't figured out how to fit it in there, is once we get to a document that everyone says, yes, this is generally what we want, and I think we do have some community meetings, so that people can review the, the conversation and the changes that were, were.
So I may suggest that we can have a little bit of, a kind of an offline conversation, just to think about timing and all, and everything that needs to happen. So I almost would say, we start from the bottom, we start with corrections. We know we want to correct what's just wrong, so that's an easy one. Then we go into the combined uses, those are a little bit easier to accept, the intent is still there. We kind of work our way up, but I, I have a feeling we're going to start on one, and then we'll get stuck on one, and have a harder time getting through it all, so let's.
I think we're intending to go one, two.
Yeah, and so I was clarifying my, you know, my direction on this.
My suggestion would be that, I think that's a fine approach. I think in order to be efficient, and I like the, you know, at some point, it was a great turnout, but at some point, you'll get tired of this, and you don't make it through.
And we forget what we said.
And well, that, that, I, I would suggest that you don't start over each time. I, I, I haven't talked to my client about this, but you give the staff the freedom to deal with these, give you the list in that order, but to make a suggestion, if they have, if they have a suggestion for how to deal with it, like the corrections, maybe very easy to do that, and then throw it out, because otherwise, you're, we're trying to remember why we raised it and reinvent the conversation. And the recommendation could be, we think you have to choose between A and B. Or it could be, you know, we've looked around, everybody else in metro area does X, we think we should do X. Or it could be, you know what, the more we look at this, this is a target, you know, we really think this should come on the table until, until someone else tells us to deal with it. But I, I guess my point is, I wouldn't, I, I think it would be more efficient if the group has a, has a suggestion, or at least may have a suggestion from staff and us as a whole, you know.
Yeah, I agree, and some of these are maybe a simplified food review, you could figure out what they certain, certain say, go, this is what the tweak was, so they really isn't going to take thirty minutes, which it may have initially, because we didn't know some of the specific details. So it's taking that on, really bringing it back in the manner in which we need to have a conversation.
Okay, you seem dubious about that.
No, I, I just want to make sure this is a process that doesn't take years. Because there will be change, there's lots of discussions that we've had and understanding, so a lot of, in the big questions, were just to understand better the intent, so I don't want to lose any of that. I mean, even for me, you know, relooking at this document before this meeting tonight, I had to refamiliarize myself with a lot of it yet again, and that was only two weeks ago. So I think, you know, let's just move as quickly, as efficiently as possible, so that we can be ready for a recommendation that we feel comfortable with. So I don't want to belabor this exercise.
And I think what we may want to bring back by the categories which you have identified, but simply with, and, and instead of going line by line, kind of saying, does anybody want to talk about any of these things in this category? Does anybody want to talk about it? But I think in each, as we get up to the more complicated ones, you know, we'll know which ones we're going to flag, which ones are purely, purely a policy, and we just got to talk about which ones before you have a suggestion. Well, if we work it out that way, you don't have to go line by line and remember each conversation.
Let me see if I got you straight, then. Take for instance vacation rentals by owner, we could start out by, we could have an eight-hour meeting just on that. Or, or staff going to give us something to read, something to react to, versus us just starting to yak about it, and it would take forever. Versus you coming up with a policy or recommendation.
I, I would suggest that we do corrections.
No, no, eventually we might have to get to that, and we might shelve it for this, for this rewrite. But give us, give us something versus us just, just waving our hands.
This was, but we actually get the list, and now it is to bring back so we can have a conversation around.
The frustrating part about, I don't have the time to cross-check, go over everything. I, I have to trust staff in, in a way to get the basics down, and then present something to us. Okay.
Okay.
Can I ask a question, which we didn't touch on, but you may have touched on. Everything that relates to marijuana, is that, was that talked about? That's done?
We didn't decide on anything, but it was, it was addressed as.
Well, you said we did, we updated.
Yes, yes, we updated.
Because my question is, if they aren't there, why do we have it listed?
Oh, well, because.
They'll be here.
We were hired to tell you what we thought a city of this size, and a state that allows, should have any use of the city go. So I, they're not, unless, it's like nightclub, I didn't know that you didn't have a nightclub, but if, if a city of this size has it, we're. So I, they're not, unless, it's like nightclub, I didn't know that you didn't have a nightclub, but if a city of this size has it, we're not, we would rather put it in and have the discussion as part of the firmament of what we're doing, even if you don't have one yet.
Okay, all right, so that's, that was just kind of talked about on the 29th?
That was my answer to your question, we didn't ask ourselves, do they have one before we put it in here, as you said, city of 40,000.
Okay.
Here's our, that growth going on, it's got the following things going on, what would we normally see in a use table for that, that's what we go on.
Okay.
Now, would we be in that banner?
All right, any final comments?
My only comment is that I looked on my calendar, the next two meetings, no meeting on the 28th, and then the subsequent one is on April 11th. And we do have some formal applications that are tracking for one or those two meetings, so we'll let you know when we'll be getting back together on this one. We'll, we'll do it on C day, we've got three formal applications, we're not planning or, we'll listen to the next meeting. So we'll be touching, let you know that.
Okay, great, thank you.
So you don't have, you don't have a date to do this?
Right, I'll let you know.
Okay.
All right, meeting adjourned, thank you.